We call the meeting to order for October 27, 2015 at 6:35 PM. The invocation is by Captain Jennifer Clanton from the Salvation Army and please remain standing for blood relief.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for another day, Lord. Father God, we just pray that as we bring our concerns and our questions before the city council, Father God, that you allow our council members to hear us and to give us favor and be able to distinguish and figure out what needs to be done in the city here of Maryville, Lord. Father God, we thank you, we praise you, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Present.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano? Baron?
Here.
Pettit?
Here.
Whitey? Goralcheck.
Present, five present. Petitions, communications, and acknowledgements and remoneration. Dedication of the north entrance of the town municipal complex in honor of Nick Schultz. Chief, you have that.
Wow.
That was Rick Delores, I D, and outstanding gentleman, which is the street department.
Looks nice.
Thank the street department.
Very nice.
Good. Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, if you want to make a motion in a second.
I make a motion that we do that.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Spann for the dedication of the north entrance of town municipal complex in honor of Nick Schultz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, accounts payable, register voucher approval for October 27, 2015, and the approval of town council meeting minutes of October 13 of 2015. Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by... Mr. Spann for the dedication of the north entrance of town municipal complex in honor of Nick Schultz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, accounts payable, register voucher approval for October 27, 2015, and the approval of town council meeting minutes of October 13 of 2015. Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by...
(inaudible). Unless you're a ventriloquist.
I think your voice just changed, too.
No, it was Mrs. Baron and Council Spann.
Okay, Mrs. Baron for the approval of the accounts payable register and Mr. Spann for the second on the town council meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Budget and finance, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, really no report, Gene. We passed the budget, so I guess we're waiting word from the state that it's been approved.
Not yet. I haven't got it back yet.
Okay. Anybody else under that? Public works, Mr. Spann?
The road that you guys are doing over there looks great. All that improvement over on Roosevelt, that the sidewalks and the curb, these curbs were sticking up upside down, like it was going to sink in. A great job. I thought the overall performance of public works this year was great. Thanks for the first leaf pickup. We do need some more.
Oh, yeah. You're gonna get a few more.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else under public works?
Couple things, Mr. President. I got a complaint that the welcome to Maryville signs at the one that was out by the Radisson, coming into Maryville by Holbert and one out by 101st, I think it is.
Yep.
Both of those signs are missing.
Yep.
We need to figure out what we need to do to get them back.
We discussed this a couple...
I thought we discussed this a while back. Did we investigate this?
And I need to look into it still. I apologize.
I must not have been there when you discussed, must have been at another meeting.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this.
Right.
The second thing is, we need to have public works take a look at all of our flags. All of our flags. We got some flags that are in horrible condition.
Okay.
And it's an embarrassment to the town as a veteran when I ride by and see those flags looking tattered. With Veterans Day coming up.
Okay, we'll get them changed.
Very much.
Anybody else under public works? Council affairs, Mrs. Miano, anybody have anything under council affairs? Seeing none. Personnel and policy and employee benefits, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. We had a workshop before the council meeting, discussed the insurance renewal for the coming year, and we will finalize that in two weeks at our next council meeting.
Anybody else have anything? Public safety, Mr. Whitey? Anybody have anything under public safety? Parks and recreation, Mrs. Orlic?
I have a couple of things. ADA inspections of all of our parks have been completed. That is turned in to Bruce for his review. The park department will hold a turkey bingo on Thursday, November 19 at 11:30. We're getting donations of turkeys to hand out as prizes prior to the Thanksgiving holiday. Two senior lunches Friday, November 13 at 11:00 AM at the Prusen Center. Representative for Medicare will be there to answer any questions any of the seniors or the general public might have. And on Friday, December 11, we'll have another senior luncheon as well, and the Maryville High School Choir will be there to entertain all the guests or participants on both of those Friday, November 13 and Friday, December 11. If anybody's interested in attending the senior luncheon, please call and reserve your spot. We need to count for meals on wheels prior to the luncheons. Maryville, the town of Maryville Parks and Recreation Department participates in the CSRI, which is the Cooperative Special Recreation Initiative. It's a partnership between community hospital and all the park and rec departments of Crown Point, Sherrville, St. John, Highland, Lake County Parks, Munster, Dyer, Whiting, Hammond, and Maryville. Maryville Parks is responsible for the Christmas party that we will hold. Again, that's an initiative with all the parks and the hospital to provide recreation to people with disabilities, so we will be holding the holiday party for that as well. And that again will be December 5, and all you have to do is call the park department and put your name down to reserve your spot. Lastly, I would like to thank Ed Yerga today for his quick response to the Prusen Center. We had an accident during a fitness program, and his response was impeccable. I want to thank him and his entire staff for what they do. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Jan, one thing. Have you ever reached out to North Shore whenever you have a program like that? North Shore would be more than happy to come out and, you know, give you some free medical advice for the seniors or anthems. Either one of those two places. I can get you some contact information for both of them, but they're always willing, and they're always looking for opportunities.
You know, I would really like the contacts because we're going to also be holding another health fair for the community, so if you can pass that along, I will definitely meet the contacts.
Not a problem.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else under Parks and Recreation? Environmental affairs?
Just a couple of things. We finished the 53rd Cork Drainage Improvements Project. We're just waiting for Asbils from Robinson Engineering before we pay Gatlin. We're also starting solicit bids for the Ross Metal Farms Project. And we're going to be closing Mississippi just north of 101st for one day next week. We're going to get some details from Robinson, but we've got to replace a 30-inch culvert out there that's failing, so we'll get to that next week. That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything under environmental affairs? Elections and public relations, Mrs. Miano, anybody have anything under that? Economic development, Mr. Pettit?
73rd Avenue is proceeding, as you folks can see. I apologize in advance for the inconvenience. I would have thought the old part would have been open by now. They're working on the east stretch between Broadway and Catherine and the cemetery. On the south side, they started ripping that up. Mississippi Street on the east side, I think is pretty much completely done. Dyer should be hopefully flipping traffic here in the next week to two weeks, and they'll continue to proceed with winter work as much as they can on Mississippi Street. 79th Avenue into the Costco and Lowe's development has been completed, and I believe, Bruce, that Robinson Engineering is now in design for 86th Avenue off of Maryville Road.
Yes, they are.
And that's about it. There are, I believe, two potential projects that may be seeking tax abatement that we're waiting on the paperwork for, and I'll convene an economic development committee meeting when Bruce gets that paperwork.
Utility liaison, Mrs. Baron?
I have no report.
Banned properties, Mr. Hardaway?
Well, everything I don't think of banned properties. The only thing that we need to be aware of, because I went to a meeting last week, and one of the things that's going to be a grave concern for us is that right now we have 160 homes in foreclosure, and if the government doesn't pass some federal laws and the state doesn't pass some state laws, next year foreclosures are going to go up astronomically throughout the country. It's not only going to be in the state of Indiana, but it's going to be throughout the country. So we just have to make sure we stay tuned and encourage our federal and state legislators to continue to keep these bills active so that it doesn't impact us any more than we're already impacted.
Do we want to send a letter to the...
We're going to have to sit down and send out some correspondence, not only... We've got a full crowd tonight, so I think it's good because the residents need to be paying attention to this also, because not only does it impact local municipalities, but it's going to impact individuals also. So stay tuned, read your newspapers, and be aware that they're going to... Right now, they're kind of hesitating as to whether they want to sign these bills again. We want to make sure that they sign them so that we don't have any more foreclosures that we have. We need to reduce the number, not increase it. So that's all I have.
Anybody else? General orders, first reading ordinance is ordinance 15-29. Ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana appropriating additional monies within the Mississippi Street TIF fund for the year of 2015, not included in current budget. So moved? Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of ordinance 15-29. Anybody have any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Goralcheck?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Ordinance 15-30, ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, depleting monies of the 2015 budget within various departmental budgets. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Baron for the approval of ordinance 15-30. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Goralcheck?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Second reading, ordinance 15-26, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana appropriating additional monies within the fire enhancement fund of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year of 2015, not included in the current budget. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Spann for the approval of ordinance 15-26. Is there any discussion? At this time, it's second reading ordinance. At this time, I'll open it up for comment on ordinance 15-26. Any public comment on ordinance 15-26? Any public comment on ordinance 15-26? At this time, I'll close public comment. Roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Goralcheck?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Ordinance 15-27 is the ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana appropriating additional monies within the Maryville Fire Territory Operation Fund of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year of 2015, not included in the current budget. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of ordinance 15-27. Is there any discussion? At this time, I'll open it up for public comment on ordinance 15-27. Any public comment on ordinance 15-27? Any public comment for ordinance 15-27? Roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Goralcheck?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Ordinance 15-28 is an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana adopting the floodplain management regulations for the town of Maryville. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Spann for the approval of 15-28. Any discussion? At this time, I'll open it up for public comment on ordinance 15-28. Any public comment on ordinance 15-28? Any public comment on ordinance 15-28? Roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Goralcheck?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Resolution 15-38 is the resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana transferring of the monies of 2015 budget within the police department general fund. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Pettit for the approval of resolution 15-38. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 15-39 is the resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana transferring the monies of 2015 budget within the parks general fund. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Spann for the approval of resolution 15-39. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 15-40 is a resolution of the town of Maryville Town Council adopting a two-year capital improvement plan for the purpose of receiving the town distribution of Lake County Economic Development Income Tax Seated Funds. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of resolution 15-40. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any BCA action? Any old business? Any new business?
I got a comment. I was looking at the status for Crime Watch. The statistics look very good. We've had a very good month, and we had a nice month last month with these statistics for you name it, accidents, robbery, burglaries. So I'd like to compliment the police force for that, and I'd also like to compliment the hard work being done in the Rinders office. I appreciate the comments, the callbacks, and the things they got done this month. That's it.
Anybody else have anything under new business? I have one thing under new business. It's a letter that was directed to everybody here in the town council here. It was to Tom Goralcheck, town council president. Dear Mr. Goralcheck, it is with my deep regret that I am resigning effective November 1st, 2015, from the Maryville Town Council due to ongoing medical issue. Please know that I have thoroughly appreciated and enjoyed the opportunity to serve with the president and past town councils. Also, I felt very honored to have served the community and all of my constituents in Ward 4 over the years. Sincerely, regards, Ron Whiting. So just wanted to say that it was a pleasure serving with the gentlemen, and I'm sure that everybody else feels the same way. Anybody have any comment on that?
Just thinking, Mr. President, I spoke with Ron last Friday, and with deep regret that he resigned at this particular time, but I understand his reasoning for doing it. He's been an asset to town of Maryville, and that dates back to when his mother, Pat, first was part of the incorporation of town of Maryville. And so he will be missed, and I just think that at some point, we need to present him with a plaque or something for his years of service and honor him and get him to come out one last time to show that we really appreciate the things that he did while he served here on the council with us.
I agree. Take care of that, Bruce.
Sure, I can do that. See if you can have him here for the first meeting next month. Okay. Thank you.
Any more new business? Seeing none, at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. Please come to the microphone and state your name for the record and your address. Anybody have anything under public comment? You have three minutes, sir.
I approach, why you do this, please? I approach.
Is it...
Yeah.
Okay, if you want to pass something out.
Okay. Football, yes. Yes, I love football. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Tony Crisp. Address is 5998 Polk Court, Maryville, Indiana, 46410. I'm contacting you today on behalf of Maryville Pop Warner. I'm the vice president, along with me the Mighty Mike head coach. The 2015 Maryville Pop Warner Mighty Mikes have been selected to represent Indiana and the Midwest region at the first weekend of December at the National Pop Warner Super Bowl Mighty Mike Exhibition. They are one of 16 teams to have earned the opportunity to compete in a national level at the ESPN Wide World Sports Complex in Lake Buena Vista, Florida. These hardworking young men have completed their regular season and local bowl game with a record of 8-0 and have outscored their opponents 218-30. This election came as a complete surprise and at the last minute, but it also represents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for these young men. Because this was a surprise invitation, we are left with a short period of time to raise funds necessary to offset the cost of this trip. The cost per player is approximately $700, which covers transportation, lodging, Disney pass, and food. All monies raised will go towards helping families send their sons on this trip. Please help these young men continue their dream season. Every time an athlete from Maryville makes it onto the national stage, it's a representation of the talent of our community. Such athletes as Dexter Laramore, state wrestling champ, played for Ohio State University; Brandon Clark, led Maryville High School team to the Dunlap Athletic Conference and plays for Santa Clara College; Courtney Berry, all-state football player, runner-up state wrestling champ, and Maryville Pop Warner alumnus, is currently plays for Alabama State University and is ranked number one in the nation of linebackers for tackles; Tom Juleski, graduate of Maryville High School, played in NFL for Philadelphia; Mike Neal, graduate of Maryville High School, currently playing for the Green Bay Packers; David Neville, graduate of Maryville High School, bronze medalist and the United States 2008 Olympic real eighteen-team participant; let's not forget Greg Popovich, graduate of Maryville High School, currently the coach of the San Antonio Spurs. While Maryville does an excellent job in supporting our senior citizens in our community, the same efforts need to be placed to invest in our youth. Programs such as Truancy Court, which is aimed at helping families in our community, holding parents accountable for educating them on the importance of their families, their children attending school, just as much energy should go into the town for supporting and investing in those children who are representing our area positively. And a personal note, as head coach of this team, one of the lessons that I like to teach these boys is that every play, you get knocked down, and you have to dust yourself off and go back in the next play and give it 100%. And that's life, gentlemen. We teaching these boys life lessons, and we would definitely appreciate any type of support that the town of Maryville can give us on our endeavors.
That's your team there standing up?
Yes, this is our...
Tony, how many players are there?
We currently have 23 roster players and five roster coaches and two team moms.
So it's a total of 30 individuals?
Total of 30 individuals.
So if my IU math is correct, Richard, they need 21,000?
Yeah. Yeah. Education goes in the ways, Sean.
I hope not.
Also, Pop Warner does have an educational component. All these boys are mandated to carry a C average, and we collect report cards, and if they don't represent themselves academically and also as gentlemen, you know, in the classroom, they are not allowed to participate in Pop Warner.
How much funds have you raised so far? I know you said it's kind of out of the blue.
Yeah, we just received the invitation Wednesday last week, I believe the 23rd, excuse me, the 22nd. Right now, we currently have about $1,000 raised, so we're a long ways away from reaching our goal.
When do you guys have to have money by?
We have up until we leave for the trip on December 3 to turn in all monies. Give me your motion. I'm waiting.
I'll make a motion out of casino that this is a one-time, it's not going to come, and I know we judge donations, folks, kind of, you know, scrutinize them.
One time.
Well, yeah, we haven't given one in a long time, and as budget and finance, I'm going to lay my head on the line, and I recommend that, you know what, guys, I'd give them $5,000. That's me. Can we do that out of casino, Gene or Bruce? Or what?
Yeah, I'll double check, but $5,000.
All right.
Motion is for donation to the Maryville Pop Warner Football Team. It's their Mighty Mikes Football Team.
Motion is for Mr. Pettit for $5,000, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of $5,000 to the Maryville Pop Warner Team to come out of the casino funds. Any other discussion?
I think it's a great opportunity.
I want all you boys to know what fan the councilman is, though. So keep that in mind. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The paper over there, The Times and The Post.
Excuse me?
Talk to the reporters over there when they have a council meeting.
If they don't, they don't get the paper delivered right now.
Bring back a trophy, and we'll have you back at the council meeting.
Anybody else under public comment? Anybody else under public comment? Is there anybody else under public comment? Announcements, Board of Zoning Appeals, October 28, 2015 at 6:30 PM. Trick or treat hours are October 31 from 5 to 7 PM.
I'm just laughing.
Okay.
Are we...
You get that right this time?
It's 5 to 7, chief, and you're going to be out with the squads, right?
That's correct.
What kind of candy you handing out?
I've got five bags in my trunk.
All right.
All right, I gotta go buy Richard some more.
Come to my house, you can eat that up in a minute.
Stormwater Management Board meeting is November 4 at 4:30 PM. Plan Commission Workshop is November 4, 2015.
And that's a change, Mr. President. That's a change to Wednesday night because of election.
So that would be November 5?
No, it's November 4, but it's just a Wednesday.
Okay. And then Plan Commission Meeting is November 6, 2015, at 8:00 AM, and the next town council meeting is November 10, 2015, at 6:30 PM.
And we would be remiss, I think, Mr. President, if we did not wish our clerk treasurer good luck on Election Day. He is the only election in town. Gene, you've done a fine job, and hopefully everything will turn out well for you on Election Day.
On November 11, Veterans Day, we will have a Veterans Day program here at Town Hall starting at 11 o'clock. Any and everybody that...
Uh, any and everybody that will, please come out, and uh we have a great speaker coming that morning, Mr. Jim Chancellor, uh to speak to our veterans. So if you, if you're available, please stop by, eleven to, I promise we'll be out here by twelve. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second, we're adjourned.